The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrassia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Villa. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Cone. Alderman Carter. Twenty-one. Present.
Quorum being present. I ask everyone in chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Before we begin prayer today, begin the meeting today, I must for a moment of silence for the brother of Terry Kennedy, Ronald Kennedy, who passed away recently. So, join me in a moment of silence for Alderman Kennedy's brother. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Announcement, special order of the day.
Alderman Jeffrey Boyd of the Engrossment Rules and Resolutions Credentials Committee submitted the following report which was read to the President of the Board, the Aldermen and Alderwomen. The Committee on Engrossments, Rules, Resolutions and Credentials have met and report that they have considered the qualifications of the following individual and find that she is qualified to hold the office of Alderwoman, Megan E. Green.
Judge Clark and Megan, Ms. Green, Alderwoman Elect, could you please join me at the dials?
Will you raise your right hand, please? I, Megan E. Green.
I, Megan E. Green.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
In the State of Missouri.
In the State of Missouri.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
By the qualified voters.
By the qualified voters.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
To the position.
To the position.
Of member.
Of member.
Of the Board of Aldermen.
Of the Board of Aldermen.
From the Fifteenth Ward.
From the Fifteenth Ward.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And am not subject.
And am not subject.
To any of the disqualifications.
To any of the disqualifications.
Named in the Charter.
Named in the Charter.
For the office.
For the office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
I am about to assume.
I am about to assume.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City.
Of the City.
That I will be influenced.
That I will be influenced.
Only by the consideration.
Only by the consideration.
Of fitness.
Of fitness.
In the appointment.
In the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension.
Suspension.
Or discharge.
Or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize.
Nor authorize.
The expenditure.
The expenditure.
Of money.
Of money.
Otherwise than for adequate consideration.
Otherwise than for adequate consideration.
And efficient service.
And efficient service.
To the City.
To the City.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
Congratulations.
Let's give Judge Clark another round of applause and thank him for coming and coming to services. Really appreciate it, Judge. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrassia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Villa. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three, present.
Quorum being present. Introduction of round of guests. Any introduction of round of guests. Alderwoman from the Fifteenth.
I have quite a list here today. Quite a list here today. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the residents, Mr., sorry, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'd like to recognize a couple of guests here today.
Please proceed. No, please proceed. Please proceed.
I thought you could be seated.
You're like, what is that?
We'll work through this.
That's perfect. No, that's perfect. Keep going.
Okay. First, I want to thank the residents of the Fifteenth Ward for graciously electing me into this position and allowing me to represent them. I also want to thank President of the Board, Louis Reed, for his support throughout my campaign and his encouragement in this pursuit. I really want to thank organized labor and particularly the plumbers and pipe fitters. Over the last 10 years, they've shown a tremendous amount of support to me. And in particular, Mike Grady, who is like a second father to me, David Holmes, John O'Mara, Tom Madden, Frank Kilcullen, and I'm sorry if I forgot anybody today. I also wanted to thank some of my super volunteers who have turned out today. Tori Park, who is my treasurer and has been a wonderful, wonderful friend and support system to me. Jill Miller, Ingbert Schmidt, Steph Atkins Sharp, Mia Henderson, Ben Murray, Shelley Justiceon, Amanda Steska, Lisa Thomas, Mark Cotelli, Maurice Johnson, and also members of the Fifteenth Ward Democrats, many of them who have shown up today to show support, including President Richard Butto, Committee Man Todd Martin, Tom Pratt, Kisa Lacassi, and I think that's it for those. And then, the last thing I want to thank, the Coro Leadership Center. Coro is what brought me here 10 years ago and really started my career in civic engagement in St. Louis. It's a wonderful leadership development program, and without that program, I would not be in St. Louis and I definitely would not be here today. I look forward to representing the Fifteenth Ward. We've had tremendous change in our demographics in the last couple of years, and I look forward to representing those changes and being the new, younger generation to represent our ward. We've seen in the last coming months, a tremendous amount of need for change in some of our systems, both locally, regionally, and nationally, and I look forward to being a part of that change and implementing some positive progressive policies for the City of St. Louis. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Alderwomen, and I know myself and other Alderpeople here are really looking forward to working with you, and you know, it's a great day for the Fifteenth Ward. Congratulations and good luck. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Introductions. Alderwoman from the first.
Okay, sorry, Mr. President, members of the Board. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Fifteenth Ward Alderwoman aboard. When I came to the Board the first time in 1991, the Fifteenth Ward Alderwoman was Geraldine Osborne, and she was instrumental in my learning. She's one of the smartest women today that I've ever known. She knows this Board backwards and forward and knew the budget. She made a grown mayor cry and go to the members of the City to have the Charter changed because she knew the budget so well. So, I look forward to working with you as the Fifteenth Ward. I actually used to live in the Eighth Ward, right up against the Fifteenth Ward, many years ago. And so, I am pleased to see another woman, even though you're replacing a woman, I'm pleased to see another woman at this Board of Aldermen. I have told the men that one day, this is going to be the Board of Alderwomen, okay? And also, Mr. President, I'd like to also introduce my special guest, the, excuse me, I almost said Circuit Clerk, I'm sorry, the license collector of the City of St. Louis, Ms. Mavis Thompson.
Alderwoman from the Thirteenth.
I would like to welcome Megan to the Board and just point out that she knocked me off my pedestal of being the new kid on the block. So, I, you know, and I also would like to have, as my honored guests from the Carpenter's District Council, Jeff Hans, Keith Taylor, and Mark Dalton. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the Sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have some special guests today. I have Michael Grady, who's with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I have Joe Steiger, who's the President of St. Louis Police Officers Association. I have Gina Hackenworth, who is with La Clee, but she's going to be a mommy after December 25th, so congratulations, Gina. And the very last, I wish I could have introduced the AT&amp;T people today because I cannot tell you how proud I am of them. They gave $300,000 to the St. Louis Public Schools through the Aspire Program. So, AT&amp;T, thank you.
Aldermen from the Ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I didn't want to stand here with the Alderwoman from the Sixteenth Ward because then you wouldn't be able to see her behind herself. First, I'd like to welcome the Fifteenth Ward Alderwoman, and I think you selected the best office back there, the best roommate, so.
That's a little biased.
Good luck, and we're going to have fun together. And I'd like to have for my honored guests today is Officer Joe Steiger and Ronnie Hour, and I should have done ladies first, I should have followed with that, but also the representative from the St. Louis Association of Realtors, Maureen McDonald.
Alderman from the Twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to announce my special guest today, Ms. Stephanie Robinson of Ameri-Ue, and also Gina Hackenworth from the Clee Gas, and she will be one of our special guests at our ward meeting to speak about a lot of the construction that's taking place throughout our ward in the City of St. Louis. So, she will be a guest there, a guest speaker, which will be the 30th of this month at Uman Memorial Church. And also, welcome Alderwoman of the Fifteenth Ward. We really appreciate having you. Thank you.
Alderwoman of the Fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I would like to welcome Megan Green, our new Alderman from the Fifteenth Ward. She, as Alderwoman Sharon Tyus stated, she has some pretty big shoes to fill, but I'm sure she's up to the task. I would also like to have for my esteemed guest today, Demetrius Alfred, from the International Association of Firefighters, Local 73, which is housed in the beautiful Bevo Ward. And I would also like to introduce Senator Harry Kennedy, representing the Recorder of Deeds Office, Jennifer Florida, Gary Best, Parks, Recreation and Forestry Commissioner, and Anthony Lancia from the AGC. And I would like to welcome them today and recognize their presence. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the Twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I too would like to welcome our esteemed Alderwoman from the Fifteenth Ward. I know she comes to us with a lot of great enthusiasm, a lot of outreach to the community. I've got a chance to know her over the past couple of years, and she's an outstanding individual. I look forward to working with her. My esteemed guest today is Mr. A. Pruitt with FIRE. Thank you.
Alderman from the Fourth.
Could you give me some volume? Oh, thank you. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Ms. Marlene Davis, who's standing, and make an announcement that tomorrow is the reunion between Sumner and Vashan tomorrow. So, bring the trophy and come on so we can take the trophy back, and we invite you all to come tomorrow morning to the tailgate party at Sumner High School, 4200 Cottage Avenue, tomorrow, starting at 10:00 a.m. Come and enjoy some of the festivities in the Fourth Ward. And bring the trophy, Marlene. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the Nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to welcome the new Alderperson for the Fifteenth Ward, and let me forewarn you guys, because you know I'm a big proponent for community organizing, but this young lady has been through CORE. CORE is one of the most prestigious groups for leadership training and coming into communities and assisting those neighborhoods or organizations with growth and development. So, I know you're well-prepared, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I also wanted to have as my honored guest today, Michael Holmes, who is the Director of SLATE. I wanted to say in public that SLATE is one of the agencies and organizations that this City should be very proud of today. Michael Holmes has taken the leadership there and has grown it beyond anything that we could have dreamed of. So, for those who don't know, the myth that SLATE is just a summer employment program, that is not true. It is now one of the premier organizations for hiring in the region, training, business development, you name it, they offer it through SLATE, and I want to thank Michael Holmes for his leadership.
All right, thank you. Any further introductions? Any further introductions?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate the Alderwoman from the Fifteenth. Megan Green for coming aboard, and let's say, I know you worked hard to get elected, and it always pays off in the end. I also want to recognize the one and only Gary Best, our Director of Parks, who is probably the most toned-down outfit I've seen in six months, which it's good, Gary, it's good. And anybody else who wasn't introduced, and especially Sam Moore is my special guest
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the Tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Today is October 17th. This is National Pasta Day. On behalf of all the Italian restaurants on the Hill and throughout the city, we encourage you to go out and enjoy your favorite noodle tonight. Thank you.
Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the October 3rd meeting.
Move by Alderman from the Seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Report of City officials.
Report of City officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
Would anyone like to take any bills from any of our informal accounters? Would anyone like to take any bills from any of our informal accounters? With dispensal line items, nine through 10, first reading Board bills, 11, first reading Board bills.
Board Bill 172, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and on its, amending on its 68874, pertaining to the issuance and delivery of tax increment revenue notes for the Grand Center redevelopment project and authorizing a sixth supplemental trust indenture and containing a severability clause.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 172, that's extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following Board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to Change the Zoning of Property from a single-family dwelling district to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for properties on Geraldine Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, authorizing the Mayor to submit 2015 through 2019 Consolidated Plan and a 2015 Annual Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Entitlement Programs and Containing an Emergency Clause. The following Board bill were reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 141, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz, and on its authorizing and directing the medical examiner to accept grant monies from the Mid-America Transplant Services Offered for the Improvement of the Infrastructure and Equipment of the Medical Examiner's Office and authorizing the medical examiner, upon approval of the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, to expend the funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for said purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 164, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and on its recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, authorizing a supplemental appropriation, amending on the 69736, commonly referred to as the Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2014 through 2015, appropriating and setting apart projected excess receipts in the Equitable Relief from the Utility Tax Fund in the amount of $125,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 165, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and on its authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services via Homeless Services Division to accept a grant agreement award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development from the 2012 Continuum of Care Grant Application in the amount of $121,207, appropriating said funds and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and on its authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services via the St. Louis Area on Aging to accept a grant award from the Missouri Alliance of Area Agencies on Aging in the amount of $64,971 and to expend those funds for the Navigator Project Services and the MA4 Letter of Award and containing an emergency clause. The following Board bill was reported out of the Parks Committee, Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and on its pertaining to barbecuing in Benton Park and containing a penalty clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line items, 15 through 17, third reading consent.
Board Bills 89, 90, 96, 113, and 114.
Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the third reading consent.
Move by Alderman from the Seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-fifth. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrassia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Villa. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman French. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three, aye votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the Seventeenth, and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Dispensable line item 19, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 89, 90, 96, 114, and 113.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix this Move for adoption on our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. With dispensal line items 21, 22, excuse me, 22 and 23, Ms. Lane has unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, Legislation Committee meeting at 3:30 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. That's 3:30 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the Eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. On Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., we will have Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting, and I think the Clerk knows all the bills to put on for that hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the Seventeenth. Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we excuse the Aldermen from the Alderpeople from the Third, Eleventh, 21st, and 27th Wards.
Move by Alderman from the Seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Alderman from the Seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till our next meeting on October the 24th.
Move by Alderman from the Seventeenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the Twenty-sixth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Stand adjourned. Oppose, stand adjourned.